The March 28th, 2023 City Commission Meeting to Order, please call the rules, city staff.
Mayor Hassel.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Present.
And Commissioner Reddy said she would be unable to attend, but we have a court.
Very good. Please join and stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item on our work session, work session agenda for the evening, which is the Kansas Open Meeting Act Training, brought to you by City County Attorney Barry Wilkerson. Is there any lead-in necessary?
No, we just appreciate Barry being here and look forward to having him do some refreshing. And so Commissioner's aware of the different aspects that he's been involved with, but I think he wants to really focus on some education and training for this evening. So appreciate Barry. I know that Commissioner Reddy told me that she didn't think she'd be, and I know she's communicated with you, and I think she's setting up some alternative training.
That is correct. She did communicate with me by email and said she would not be able to attend. She was gonna, she might, if meetings ended in time, zoom in, but otherwise she would attend either. I would set up another training for her with someone else, or we'll make arrangements. And if you want to call it training, or just kind of some, you know, kind of where we're headed, or, you know, some areas to watch out for. But I did tell her, I communicated to her that I would be glad to provide any materials that I had and make sure that she got her, you know, the information that the rest of the commission got today, so.
All right, go ahead then.
Well, Kansas Open Meetings Act, we've got a new Attorney General. And, you know, I've now been through six, I believe, at last count. And so there's always a little bit of, you know, different interpretations here and there. But overall, I think, you know, really, on the main points, the Attorney General's office has always been fairly consistent. We've kind of tried to follow in most, in most areas, their lead on some things. But I thought, you know, just as it's that time of year, it's been a few years, and that I would, invitation, I'm back here and to, you know, answer questions too. Hopefully, this will just be some things to look out for, but answer some questions if you have any. And my understanding is I'm here, you've got me till 6:30, so if we can end sooner, that's fine as well. But you've got me for the next at least half hour. The Kansas Open Meetings Act, you know, and Cora's, the whole impetus behind both those acts are to provide open government. Sunshine laws, they've been referred to, to ensure that the public is aware that the conduct of governmental affairs are open out in the public and not just the vote, the discussion also. The reason that elected officials, whether it be the Kansas Legislature, the Board of County Commission, Law Board, or City Commission, you know, what is the, you know, they want to be, they have an opportunity to watch the decision-making process. So that's really kind of the impetus behind the Kansas Open Meetings Act, to ensure that government is open and transparent. And there have been, you know, adjustments, and we'll talk about that along the way. But basically, it's, people want open government. And as I was telling, you know, City Manager Ron Fear before the meeting, this is the one area that we seem to have bipartisan agreement on. And my contacts with the legislature over the year, this is something that, whether they're Republican, Democrat, Senator, Representative, this is, this is something that seems to be very important to the legislature. And I think that's reflected in what happened in 1994. In 1994, Attorney General Robert Stephan, who was really aggressive in terms of enforcing the Kansas Open Meetings Act, I didn't go and just hand-count or anything like that, but I did note a lot of cases, went up to the courts during Stephan's term as Kansas Attorney General. One of those was the Board of County Commissioners versus Seward County. The late General Stephan argued that telephone calls between commissioners constituted a meeting, and therefore they were in violation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Kansas Supreme Court disagreed, said, "No, it's not a violation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act." The Kansas Legislature responded in 753718 by amending the Kansas Open Meeting Act to read, "As used in the Open Meetings Act, meeting means any gathering or assembly in person or through the use of a telephone or any other medium for interactive communication by a majority of the membership of a public body or agency subject to this act for the purpose of discussing the business or affairs of the public body or agency." That's how quickly the legislature responded to a Supreme Court decision that said there wasn't a violation of the Open Meetings Act. They changed it. They amended it. So I think that's always something to keep in mind, too, is even if you were to win on the, on the front end, the legislature is probably going to amend it so that it encompasses, carries out what they want, which is open government. And we'll talk a little bit about that when we get into some of the social media platforms that I think are going to be what's, what will be the next, probably, focus of litigation that we see in this state, if we see any on, on open meetings, is going to be with the social media platforms. Under 754318, and I know, I know you've all been exposed to the Open Meetings Act before, and you've had some training on this, so a lot of this isn't new. It's just kind of a refresher. My idea is, you know, I want to keep everybody, do my best to keep everybody out of trouble, and what I think will be where the Kansas Attorney General comes down on this. I want to keep, keep everybody in compliance. Under 754318, Manhattan City Commission, under subsection A, is obviously subject to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. I don't think anybody's going to disagree with that. County Commission, any committees that receive public funds, Child Death Review Board, they are subject to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Manhattan City Commission expands public funds, so certainly it is subject to Tacoma as well as Cora. One of the important provisions is notice. And we're going to talk about, I think notice is probably one of the areas which is where people could get, can get tripped up. And it's really kind of the, I don't know, I think it's, it's key to understanding coma and to complying with coma. You have notice of the date, time, and place of any regular or special meeting of the public body or agency designated in subsection A, and shall be furnished to any person requesting such notice. And if you're wondering why I've given you some print materials, if it's in italics, that means that I've taken it right out of the statute. It's identical to the statute. The rest of it, I didn't, I've attached the statutes, and you can see that can get kind of lengthy. So I just tried to shorthand it. But, you know, different agencies, whether it's public, a private person, a newspaper, if they've requested notice of a meeting, then we're required to give them notice. And, you know, there's some provisions that, at the, now, after a year, you can make certain requirements. And I'll defer to Katie and City Administration on, I'll refer you to them if you want to try to make some changes or whatever your procedures are, processes. But if somebody, you know, requests it, and you can make people, you know, lack of a better term, re-up every year. And, you know, make, make a request every year annually. But before you take somebody off, you would have to reach out to them and let them know that they're going to be dropped, so they have the opportunity to at least, you know, make a request to be, to be notified. And, you know, I think this is probably where we can, we can run into issues if we start having meetings and discussions, is this, this notice. And that people that are, that have requested notice are entitled to be here when you're discussing items of, items of public business or the city business. Since this is a city commission, we'll stick to city commission. But if, if, you know, if you're going to discuss city, you know, city business, just make sure it's, you know, at meeting times, and you didn't start early. You know, 5:30, you don't start at 5:15 discussing city business, or you could run afoul of the Open Meetings Act. Item F, you know, I, some of this I bolded because I think probably, you know, to me is more critical what, I've been doing this for, if you include Potawatomi County, 20, 20-plus years, 22 years, where I've had to review, you know, coma allegations, and it's been from a lot of entities that over the years, you know, we have to determine, do an investigation to determine whether there's been compliance or whether they violated it. But I think that, so that's why I kind of highlighted some of this and with bold print is because I think these are the ones that have caused more problems in the years that I've been doing coma investigations. You know, interactive communications, if they involve a majority of the membership of the public body or agency, share a common topic of discussion concerning the business or affairs of the public body or agency, or are intended by, and are intended by any of the participants to reach agreement on a matter that would require binding action to be taken by the public body or agency. It's these interactive communications that are going to put us back under a meeting, under 754317, 17A. So if you start having interactive communications, it's going to be a meeting, and that meeting's going to have to meet, going to have to meet the notice requirements in order for you to ensure yourself that you don't run afoul of coma.
Got a question for you?
Certainly.
Two commissioners do a radio show, and they're talking about all sorts of different city issues. Third commissioner, or fourth or fifth, are listening to the radio show. They get to hear everything they say and where they stand on whatever all those issues are. And then one of those commissioners, when they're separate from the one that did the radio show, runs into one of those three commissioners. And one of that commissioner who listened to it asks that commissioner questions about what they said, independently now?
I wouldn't recommend it. I mean, I, I think, I mean, I think that if you, you know, you're now, you've got an interactive communication, and I'll tell you, the last AG's office was a little, probably could be a little constrictor on this than I am, or than I would consider it because I'm looking at if this matter were to go to court, I'll, I think he would be. But I think that if you, you know, two city commissioners are having a discussion, the other three hear it, there's no interactive communication, no talk about it, then I think you're fine. I think if you start having discussions where you bring in a third city commissioner who's now having, and it's about city business, then I think you, you could run a, possibly run afoul of coma.
Yeah, in some, in some sense, those other commissioners don't even necessarily need to talk to the two. They at least, from a certain sense, they already kind of know at least what two commissioners think about the issue in what I guess would be a totally legal context, because two can go on together and do a radio show.
It's, it's when the interactive.
Right. It's if, it's if you come, me and him do a show, you come up and ask me about it, that's when you have the issue. But obviously, if you listen to the show, you have a pretty good idea of where the two of us stand on the issue.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, you, and I know there's been other people who've advised that, on Law Board, but City Commission, that not everybody on a board go and listen to, say, a presentation put on by, you know, CAB. You can do that. That is, that in and of itself is not a violation because there's no interactive communication. And you can have a majority, you know, it's, how many events take place in this community where all the city commissioners, all the county commissioners, or whatever, may be present. And you can hear the information. It's the interactive discussions that take place. You know, that's what I think the intent of the legislature is saying, we want those, you know, when those interactive communications get to a majority of a board or a commission, you know, we, we want those noticed up for, for media. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So if you're just listening, you know, if there's two people having a conversation, just, my advice is, if you listen, just listen. Don't say a word. Closer executive meetings, I think everybody's fairly well, well-versed on those. You can have a, an executive meeting on certain topics. At least the, the advice that's come down is to be a little bit more, be a little more careful. And this was directed towards me, but regarding, you know, a statement describing a subject in closer executive session, the justification has to be listed in subsection B, you know, non-elected personnel matters, issues involving contracts, attorney-client privilege, those matters can be, obviously, are proper for the executive session. Thing to make sure you do, which, Law Board, speaking from experience, we've gotten better at is we say the time and place that we're going to reconvene. Instead of just saying we're going into executive session for 10 minutes and leaving, you know, when are we going to come back? I mean, that's, that way meets the, the idea behind the notice in 4318B. I kind of laid out on page two and three, I think those items that are likely to come before the City Commission, I listed the whole statute, it's in italics, but I bolded those matters that I believe will, would likely come before the City Commission, so that, you know, if you want to use this as a cheat sheet, feel, feel free to. I did just put the whole statute in on this, on this part of it. Again, no binding actions taken during closure executive recesses. You can't use them to try to defeat the purpose of the act. If there's things that are uncomfortable, that you don't want to talk about in an open session, you cannot use an executive session to, to try to get around it. You just have to, you have to, you know, understand that, you know, there's items that sometimes are not comfortable for us to discuss that we have to discuss because they don't meet one of the, other criteria for an executive session. One of the problem areas that I see, and it's, yeah, I looked, I pulled up Westlaw, I didn't see anything, anything recent. I didn't spend a lot of time, but I did spend some time trying to see if there was anything on, so, any cases on social media, Twitter, Facebook, public blogs. I, I think those are going to be, you know, i- issues that we're going to see people getting, getting caught up on. Yeah, we used to have a, a city commissioner who is on a law board as well. Not going to mention name, but been several years ago, who would engage in a lot of blogging on Mercury, had a blogging site, and would ask people to, you know, get on there and talk about things. Well, if you get, you know, I was on the law board, you get four law board members on that blog, then you've got, you got an open meetings violation, in my opinion. When you go back to 4317A, I think it's pretty clear that Twitter, Facebook, computer, personal computer, your cellphone, whatever device, your electronic devices you're using, that's going to be that medium. That's going to fall within that definition of a medium. So if, yeah, if you were sitting there, you know, you're, you're watching Facebook, or you're watching somebody on Twitter, Facebook Messenger, a blog, whatever it may be, okay, read it. My advice is if you start seeing other, you know, members of a board or a commission that are commenting on it, and it's matters that are going to come before a commission, then just, you know, just avoid it. Avoid responding to it. That way you avoid engaging in an interactive communication. You see it, you know, personally, I don't think it's a violation if you're just present when these discussions are going on. But I think once you engage in it and you start commenting, then I think it's a violation. I will tell you that there was at least one assistant in the Attorney General's office who held a stricter view than, than I do. And she thought if everyone, you know, if everybody was present, and there were even a communication between, say, two city commissioners, for example, and the other three were present, that, you know, that met the criteria for a coma, for a meeting and a coma violation. I, I think it requires more than that, is, again, I'm looking at what it would take to go to court, what I would feel comfortable if I had to prosecute one of these. In court, I would want to show that somebody wasn't just, you know, sitting there because you can't do anything. Somebody could just walk in, one city commissioner, who's got an Asher grind, could just walk in here and start, you know, spewing city business. And everybody in here, if you just use a criteria of, you know, how many are present, then everybody in here would, without doing anything, or having any control over it, would be guilty of a coma violation. And I don't think that is the intent of the act, and that, that's not how I read the interactive communication. Now, walk in here, and everybody starts carrying on a conversation, different story, you've engaged in an interactive communication. But I think as long as you're what I would call, you know, passive listener, whether it be verbal communication, or, you know, you're sitting there watching two other city commissioners talk on a, on a Twitter feed, a blog, whatever, then I think you're fine. I don't think you're going to, you're going to be in violation. Does that, does that make sense? Anybody have any questions? Now, I will tell you, the danger is, if there's two of you on there, and you're not intending for the third person to get on that blog, or on that Facebook post, or on that, that electronic conversation, and all of a sudden that third person is on there, you know, then you've got a meeting of the majority. And you've got an interactive communication, and you've got a violation. So that, that is the, you know, I, I think that's the, you know, I don't want to say danger, but I, I think that is a risk of, of the electronic, is that, you know, once you say something and put it out there, then you have no other control of whether other, you know, law board members, city commissioners, county commissioners, whatever the case may be, get on there and start, and start reacting. And so that's, you know, that's my word of caution, is even if you're the first, you know, if there's two more joined, then, you know, it's.
Barry, the other, one issue that kind of raised its head a little bit was when there was some story, and the, the person who posted it on Facebook tagged three commissioners. It's like, "What do you guys think of this?" It's like, it's like, "Yeah, we", somebody can weigh in on it, but all three of us couldn't weigh in on it or so. That's where you just, like, and I think at one point, somebody untagged themselves from it or something so that there was only two names listed, and I, I'm maybe remembering it wrong, but I was thinking that that's one of the things when people sort of create a problem for you by, by trying to involve you, the three of us, at some discussion, but we just have to make sure that if two people have responded, then the third one can't.
Yeah, just, yeah, just be, you know, be passive.
Yeah, so.
That assumes, that assumes you're on the same thread. If you go start a completely different discussion, is that, I mean, then you're avoiding it? I guess, I think we're cautioned not to do it, but I just wondered, when a third, when a third commissioner would come on to a, and, let's say, a.
Livestream.
Yeah. Who is at fault? Is it the third commissioner, or is it all three of you that would get the violation?
Well, all three would get the violation.
Yeah, okay, that's what.
Because then you'd have a majority, so it'd be all three.
Okay.
It's interesting if you were to do it to court, you have two people doing a livestream just all by themselves, and the third person writes in a comment, didn't do live comments. It's like, the other two didn't ask for the comment, didn't.
Seek the input. It was the third that interjected it.
I, I mean, I think that's, I mean, that's a good point. That's, I think that's the difficulty. That's why I, you know, there's, you know, I haven't seen any cases on this, and I don't know. I mean, it's, social media platforms have, you know, I, I think they're going to have to look at that with regard.
And throw in another twist, you do a livestream to do it, the recording stays out there. The third commissioner comments on the recording.
Yeah, go ahead. Katie, you're dying to say something.
Well, no, I was just going to say on the tagging, the practical advice we give at the City Attorney's Meeting is that you can program your social media accounts so people can't tag you. And that's something, so, without your, without you accepting it. And that's something that we've told, like, we've let people know so that you don't get in that situation inadvertently, and they dialogue with you. Just a practical piece of information.
Okay. Yeah, you know, Commissioner Mata, I wish I could answer your question better. I don't know where this is going to go. I, I think they're going to need to look at amending this statute, and I think there needs to be some hard looks at it because you can be on there by yourself, and two commissioners who don't like you all of a sudden say, you know, we're going to get.
Yeah, I could just do my own broadcast, and then two commissioners come in and comment on it. Hit me with that one?
I, I mean, that's, you know, that's, it.
But would, would it make a difference, like, like, say, John and I have done that before on Our Manhattan, where we've talked with Mike Crystal. But would it be smart to say, "Remember a coma, and no other commissioners comment on this"? I mean, would, would that be useful? I mean, we could do that on Facebook, too, when we get a triple tag, like, like happens on occasion, to just say, you know, "We're not going to comment because it's a coma violation."
Yeah, I mean, I think you could just, you, you can do everything you can to mitigate it. I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't want to, well, I don't want to speak for the Attorney General because we've got a new one, and I don't know where their, what their position is on it. But certainly, you know, when you're not trying to intentionally do it, it's, obviously, that mitigates your exposure to a coma violation. And that's, it's different times that we live in.
If I could say one more thing on that point, the statute doesn't require you to intend to create the violation. So in your scenario, it's true that if you have two, and one comes along and joins, they could create that violation. The mitigation is on the penalty side.
True.
Just to make it clear for the commission, because the statute isn't looking for that. They're looking for the situation so that they don't have to get into, "Did you intend to have this secret meeting"? It's, it's whether the facts. I don't know if you want to speak more to that. I just want them to understand for sure, it's the mitigation's in the penalty, not as much in whether or not the violation occurred.
True, yeah. That's, it would, if you're not doing anything intentionally, they're not going to, the Attorney General's office is not going to try to remove you from office. If you're doing something intentionally, then, but you could still be exposing yourself to a coma violation.
Besides the vigorous browbeating by the county attorney, what are the other penalties for coma violations? Fines?
Fines, you know, it's, uh, I think I've got a statute. I've, I've never had one that, that was blatant, and so I've never asked for a fine. I've never, I've never taken one to court. I mean, I've, I've had violations over the years by different entities that I didn't think were serious enough to, to warrant anything other than a warning and don't do it again, kinda thing. So.
Okay.
It resolved itself, but it, it could be a fine. I mean, it's, removal from office is the extreme. It's the.
Blatant.
I, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
That I'm aware of, not, not here locally anywhere or in the area.
Good. All right. What else you got?
That is all I have. I'm here to answer any other questions. Uh, I think I said I would be here till six-thirty and then after that.
Six-thirty.
No, I, I, if you have any questions, certainly I'll, I wanna, you know, work together, help everybody, do what I can to avoid any issues.
I think we don't wanna be a precedent. Of all the cities and counties and government units in Kansas, we don't wanna be the, the one that goes to the mat with this. I think we're, and it's important that we, uh, just kind of are reminded every year, one way or another, to, um, just be cautious, 'cause it's easy to, uh, slip into just being friendly. So, appreciate you coming.
You're welcome. I, I think it has gotten more difficult and I think everybody realizes that it's gotten more difficult because people expect you to respond at times. And it's, you know, it's difficult to tell a constituent, I'm not gonna respond to your, your question or, or whatever, your comments, so.
Even another commissioner.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Barry, and.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. You're welcome.
All right. Have a good night and we'll, uh, that is the extent of our work session items. We'll move on to the city manager briefing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, do we have a few things? I thought I'd run through it, then we can go through the planning chart. Um, we have, uh, some officials from the City of Independence that is, uh, desiring to come visit our community on April twenty-seventh at two P M. Uh, they have, originally it was, we thought it was just gonna be staff and they've been adding to it. Uh, they're interested in our redevelopment project downtown and our star bond project and just kinda looking for some of the history. How do we do that? How did you, you know, how did you do your museum and all of that stuff? So, but they have added, uh, to that group, uh, in addition to, uh, their city staff members, uh, they have added two council members and the president of the chamber. Uh, prior to that, I had asked, uh, some folks that had, were involved, uh, in that project and, and former mayor and, uh, Bruce Sneed, who obviously was in that and has been, uh, chair of the Flynn Hills Discovery Center Foundation, uh, as well, and to help give some of that history. Uh, C V B, now former C V B director, Karen Hibbert, and former chamber director, Lyle Butler, have all agreed to do that. I've offered Jason Smith, if he'd like to attend since his counterparts are attending. But I didn't know if you were, any of you, you're certainly, uh, obviously if more than two of you attend, we'll have to notice it, which may limit some of that discussion, but.
What date?
It is, uh, uh, April twenty-seventh at two P M., uh, down at the Discovery Center. So, if you, you're very welcome to participate and, and if you're interested, uh, we certainly, uh, would like to include you. You've all obviously been involved in expanding the redevelopment district for the Art and Light Museum, so there's other stories to tell about it as well.
And who are these people?
Independence fans.
City of Independence, Missouri. I'm sorry.
Missouri. What, Star Bonds? What, what do they care about Star Bonds?
Well, I think they have different tools. Their, their, uh, their, their TIF rules are much more liberal than, than ours are. Uh, they can amend things just by majority vote of the commission and, uh, as things take on, on different lives, they can extend deadlines. There, there's a whole different process that we've learned over the years that are different redevelopment tools. I, I don't think they do have a state star bond, but they have other tax credits and different programs in place for them. But they are just, uh, they're interested in the Discovery Center itself and its history and then the redevelopment effort in our entertainment district and our retail district that we created for the, to help support the bond. So, uh, it's, uh, from two to five, roughly, that, that day. So, but you're.
I'll pass on that.
Okay. If you're interested. All right. Just, I just wanted to extend the opportunity and let you know what was happening.
I'll be glad to come if, uh, you think it's valuable. I wasn't here for the, um, first star bonds and the dow- early downtown redevelopment, several of you were. So if they're after that history, if it's, if it's more recent, then I can certainly, I'd be interested. It's always helpful when you interact with another community and, uh, share, uh, the successes you've had, so.
It's a little ways away, so we hope to get some of their questions in advance. And if I think those are relative, then I'll certainly pass that along.
I think it's a compliment that they're coming.
Yeah.
So, yep.
I'll stop in and say hi and have a cookie.
All right. All right. So, uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention, and I apologize, we had a lot in your mail folder last night, um, and I don't know if you had a chance to get through all of it, but, uh, a while back, we had talked about some of the challenges we have in purchasing vehicles. Um, and so I had a memo in there that Katie helped provide that, uh, speaks to, you know, the making of a finding of, uh, some of the challenges and it, allowing the, me as city manager to make that purchase based on efficiencies and, and whether it's gonna work a hardship, uh, on the organization. And I wanted to see if you were comfortable the way we laid that out, or if you would rather prefer me to bring something back to you that is in a resolution format that, uh, gives me that specific authority for a specific time. We were kinda waiting, uh, you know, we've been relying heavily on these, uh, state, uh, state bid list. Well, there's no vehicles on the state bid list, uh, hardly, uh, again. So I anticipate we're gonna have some of the similar problems in, in purchasing vehicles. And had an example the other day where Casey found something that fit really well and, you know, had to let them know by the end of the day, uh, whether or not they wanted it. Um, and otherwise it was gonna be to go into somebody else, so.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to, to read it. Do you have the.
Well, it basically.
Dollar limit or zero?
Well, the, well, the gist of it was that you've already got the authority based on the allowance.
Fifty thousand.
There's, it's, it's up to fifty thousand unless there's some extenuating circumstances. And that's basically what she pointed out was that we don't need to change anything. He really has that ability. Um, it's just, yeah, if you get all carried away, we'll slap your wrist.
And I would, I would let you know when I would perform those actions so that you were certainly aware of it.
Okay.
And it doesn't, and that was, I wanted to make sure you were comfortable with that, or if you'd rather us to put that in a more formal resolution or some temporary measure. We talked about that, like, we had with COVID and that kinda stuff.
These are unusual times in that there is no list. There are no vehicles. Someday it will return to normal and, uh, you know, by then we'll probably have a new, uh, sensitive, sensitivity of, but Ron does it all the time, 'cause it'll probably be a couple of years before it straightens out.
So, so is that limited to fifty thousand though?
No.
No, it's, it could be more than that. That's, I, I can do it now, up to fifty thousand. So this is the measure where if it's gonna cause us a hardship, uh, or it's routine maintenance or something like that, like we've done, I do it with pool chemicals now. We used to bring that to you, but it's, uh.
Yeah, I mean.
Being able to piece those together and, and.
But for a vehicle.
Water, water plant.
Heavy-duty vehicles gonna get you over that.
Yeah. Right. Well, even.
Yeah, even heavy-duty.
Even not heavy-duty, yeah. It's just unfortunate. And, you know, we're, we're also looking at slightly used vehicles too. The used vehicle market's starting to come back some. Uh, and that's, that's certainly an option.
Yeah, we're fine.
I, I don't have a problem with it, 'cause I don't, I don't see the commission really providing any relative input that, that you wouldn't already know. So, and, and, and there wouldn't be any reason for us to deny it.
And, and everything's already in the.
Can't deny like buying chemicals for the pool, 'cause I close the pool down.
And that's what we have to look at hard is, you know, whether or not, you know, if we budgeted forty and, and it's fifty-five, what aren't you gonna do by buying that? Or, or, and, and really what we had to do was we had, we pooled all that money and made some priorities and we, and we didn't make some purchases because we had to use some of that funding to fund everything else. So, those are the, the things we go through. But I will, I will let you know when I do those.
Yep.
So that you'll be aware. Uh, thank you. Appreciate that. So, the other, one of the other things I wanted to just mention quickly was that, uh, as we started the meeting at six today, our runway officially closed. Um, for, uh, the first phase of closure, this is where we're shortening the main runway down to fifty-eight hundred feet. So, what they're doing right now is, uh, re-marking everything. So then, you know, once they get the, the threshold changed, uh, and marked, and, and I think it's Friday at, uh, seven A M., this Friday. So it's from today through Friday. At seven A M. is when it'll reopen. There is a scheduled flight, uh, for American later that morning. Uh, and again, this just, uh, shortens the runway while they work on some of that component of it. And then, uh, just, just, just to reiterate, uh, what the next phases are, uh, when we get to, uh.
May fifth?
Uh, May twelfth, uh, through July nineteenth. Uh, that's a, uh, full closure, uh, as we have to do the, the primary grading there at the intersections of the two runways. Uh, then anticipating like July nineteenth, the crosswind runway would reopen, uh, and then through, uh, August thirty-first, and reopening on September first at seven A M. for everything. So, uh.
But the crosswind runway is no good for American.
It's too short.
For that plane.
Yeah.
Theoretically, they have some other planes that are mothballed, that they'd have to reactivate and we don't think they're gonna, they've told us they're not planning to do that. So, so they've adjusted the schedules already.
So the plan is to fully reopen August, what date?
Nope. September first.
September one, okay.
So more to come on that as things progresses, but, uh, I wanted to, uh, it's quite an effort they're undertaking this evening, uh, to get all the markings in place. All the FAA officials are there and to make, and getting the notices out. So, you know, our airport's closed, you can't land here, all that kinda stuff. All the nodums they have to do to, to educate folks on that. So, more to come. And there's some stuff related on the planning chart I'll speak to, uh, relative to some of that as well. Uh, also in your packet, I had, that, we had a, uh, nothing specifically, but a general notice that came from the National League of Cities, uh, to encourage us to sign on a letter of support that, uh, I think two hundred mayors have signed on to now.
Four hundred.
Four hundred. Uh, for, uh, just railroads, uh, and just some, some of the railroad regulations, specifically from the Ohio rec that, uh, derailed and, and caused the chemical, uh, disposal and just, uh, encouraging Congress and the administration to, to, uh, modernize some of our standards and, uh, dealing with length of times that crossings can be closed and just, uh, different inspections. So I, there was a sample of, of the letter that I'd provide, so looking for some feedback. And if, uh, you wanted to give it later, if you didn't get a chance to read it, that'd be fine as well, to see if the mayor.
I, I'd be interested in the specifics of what they wanna regulate. And the reason I say that is I've got a, a friend, Donnie, who, uh, when he retired from the Army, he operated, he was an engineer for twenty years. And we had a long discussion over that stuff. And some of the things they wanna do is crazy based on what he told me. So I'm, I'm not ready to jump in with both feet, be, because there's a lot of technical information there that, uh, you know, and Congress sometimes goes nuts and puts in regulations to do more harm than good, so.
I think the National League, uh, material was very, just moderate, and it did not go knee-deep into detail. But when you consider the length of rails here in our downtown city and, uh, an Ohio incident of any kind, uh, and we don't even know what goes through, nor do we, I mean, the emergency personnel may know what to do in a case of a, um, an accident of some kind, but the general population has no clue. Just be, you know, we know what to do with a flood, we've had that experience, but we haven't with a rail incident. And so I, I think our community needs to be better informed and maybe a training session by our emergency responders about what, what, take us through, you know, a relatively simple incident of what kinds of things could happen. But I, I, I think it's important that even small communities our size, uh, also be concerned, uh, before it happens, instead of having to al- always react afterwards. It's what we do with a flood, you know, until we started taking the measures that Manhattan has been taking with regard to a flood. We have been proactive, uh, with our, um, mitigation ahead of time, uh, to re- reduce flooding impact on our community. And I'd like to have us be thinking about it with regard to rail accidents also.
So, uh, we can do a draft letter and circulate that and you can give me some feedback?
And when, in that email, in that National League of Cities document is a link that talks about their specific recommendations. And they're, I mean, I, I dug, I went in a couple of links and it's pretty general. Uh, they're, they, they've been recommendations for years about some rail safety, uh, and we've heard a lot about what, that that, those safety measures were not in place for that Ohio accident. Uh, so, you know, there's some basic things we can do. It's like flood, we're doing basic things here and I'm proud of our community for that. So, I'd like to approach it, uh, so, that we're not blindsided.
It is something to look.
Okay. I do know our legislators.
Yeah.
Are talking about several railroad issues, mainly length of cars.
Yeah, they're interested.
How long an intersection can be blocked and that sort of thing. So, I will, we will do that and, and circulate it. There's several, speaking of the league, uh, I, I know the mayor's planning to go out to the leadership summit, uh, out in Hayes. And, uh, that deadline to register for that is April fifth. So, if you don't, uh, if you're interested in that, there's also, I mean, several training institutes that they have coming up, uh, both in-person and, and online, uh, for advanced municipal finance and municipal finance and budget. Uh, there's a, just the joint city-county, county meeting would be April twentieth at the county. Uh, the intergovernmental would be on April twenty-fourth. And then I know you've gotten several invitations. Uh, the M R C luncheon is April fifth. And I think a couple of you have already R S V P'd for that. They've got, uh, Lieutenant Colonel Brad Roush and Lieutenant Colonel Brian Woodoff.
The K-State.
K-State R O T C, Air Force and Army, uh, that are the speakers for that. And then the Little Apple Brigade Social Event is at downtown on April twentieth at six-thirty. I think, uh, you should've gotten invitations too. If not, we can certainly get those back out. Those are, R S V Ps are due back April seventh. And then, uh, our own sponsored housing conference is scheduled for April nineteenth from nine to four up at Sunset Zoo. So, if there's three of you that are attending that, it knows it's, I know Commissioner Morris has already, uh, indicated that, that she plans to attend. Uh, on the planning chart, uh, coming up, uh, next week, uh, the, I just learned late this afternoon, after this was already printed, that the, uh, item, general agenda item one A through one E, which is all relating to improving the alleyway between Rally House and Mr. Good Sense, uh, will likely be delayed till at least the eighteenth. Uh, they're still working on some, some easements for that. Uh, so, uh, it looks like right now the only general agenda item will be to take up the discussion of the, for one, providing the parking services update, uh, and, uh, the employee permit, uh, or employee parking issue that, uh, obviously filled the room here a while back.
Plus, we got a little note from the Business Association.
I was gonna say, I think you all got, I was told you all had direct, uh, emails from a new position that the Aggieville Business Association would like for you to take.
You didn't get a copy of that?
I did, yes. So I wanted to make sure, I just found out this afternoon that they did provide you a copy, 'cause if they didn't, I was gonna give you one today, 'cause that came yesterday. I got it yesterday.
Yeah, that's when I got it too.
Okay. Um, and so, uh, we're gonna go ahead and add that component to the discussion as well. And also, I know there was a lot of information. So last, last night's mail folder had some preliminary information on some of our data. Uh, we're gonna try and, given the requests that they've had, we're gonna groom that up a little bit, make it more, uh, comprehensive, address it a little bit broader than what, uh, we had originally planned to, given the request that's been given to you, so.
Yeah, 'cause I, I read that in detail and it's got some pretty good data in there, like. Yeah, 'cause I, I read that in detail, and it's got some pretty good data in there, like, I, I think the information basically refutes their need to have free parking, is, is my conclusion. Because of the, you know, the average time that people are parking's an hour and thirty-six minutes, I think it said, and that's free. So, I, I don't think what they wanna do is gonna change anybody's behavior. So, I'm, I'm not in favor of it, so I'll just say that.
Yeah, and we wanna compute some of the ratios, how many, how much a use is employee parking, how much is customer parking? Uh, we've got some broad data on that regard, how long are those stays? The other thing that we just wanna make sure you're aware of, and, and that they're aware of, is that, uh, you know, with the midtown delay and, and reopening those streets just as soon as this Manhattan Avenue project at Moro intersection, and that little leg gets done, everything's pretty much pulling out, and the alley. Uh, but we expect that to be a few weeks, Jason, uh, at, at the most. And then, the streets are all back open and there is no construction.
For how long?
Till midtown starts back up.
But as far as, we're not gonna tear up Moro this summer?
No.
No, you're...
Or we don't even have Moro designed.
It'll be eighteen months before we're working in Aggieville again.
Besides Fremont Street, which you start this summer?
Right, yeah.
But that's outside of...
And we are going to make some, uh, we're, we're, there's some mill and overlay work that has to be done to patch in Manhattan. So, while that is there, we're gonna put a small mill and overlay on Moro, just, 'cause it's gonna be there. Assuming everything follows originally as planned, it's gonna be a year or two before we're... More like three, before we're on Moro. Once we've decided on the design, uh, I guarantee it will be done, because there's a huge water, there's a lack of a huge water line that needs to happen, and that one could fail.
If surface is getting, surface is getting in pretty bad, pretty bad shape.
You know, and that will help them and be more inviting and give them a more wearable service, and we can even play with the striping, so...
I think people are just worn out, so I, with the issue, so it'll be good to give a breather to.
So, anyway, we're planning to add that further discussion that night, so... And I've told Dennis that.
Okay.
Told him we were doing the other one, too, but I'll, I'll make sure he knows otherwise, so...
Yeah, I wanted to ask one other question, 'cause I, I must not have picked up on it when we first started talking about parking. But apparently, you know, if you go park for free for two hours, the city has to pay thirty-five cents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of the app. Is there any way that somebody can contact that company and say, "This makes no sense, you shouldn't get a fee if we're not getting anything"? I mean, I don't know if anybody's thought about that, I, because... Because my assumption was that there probably was a fee, but only if money was collected. If no money's collected, that makes no sense. And that's, that was a huge loss in that report, and, and that, that just wasn't in my calculation, so...
Have, have you experienced the app in the garage? Have you used it yourself?
Well, I've used it, yeah.
Okay, so when you pull in, you know, you select the two hours, and it's zero dollars, and you pay, you're in the system. So, Park Mobile has actually done work for us under that transaction, even though no revenue is collected, they are tracking that vehicle. If that vehicle stays an hour forty-five, Park Mobile actually sends it a notice, "You must remove your car from the garage in fifteen minutes, or you'll need to add an hour and pay for parking." So, the app is actually working, and, and per use of the, that app, there is a charge. We only realize revenue in the third, you know, after two hours.
I understand that, okay.
But we still have to pay for the app. Now, if we didn't wanna cover that, we could pass that along to the user. We just recognize, we had told people free parking for two hours, and if all of a sudden we're charging them thirty-five cents, you're gonna hear about it. So, for now, we've decided to absorb it. We know we're gonna come back to you all and talk parking, and talk fees, and talk about structure. You know, if we get it down to the hour, which is what we originally recommended being free, we're gonna have far less of these transactions without any revenue. It, it's just where we were gonna evolve to. It's not something we plan on eating and paying for forever, but for this moment, we, we didn't wanna run back in here. We didn't realize it until late, but we also didn't know we were gonna adjust from two hours to one hour until late either.
No, I still think I'd, I'd be looking at that contract to see what the deal is there, that...
All right, otherwise, uh, on the consent agenda, we've got, uh, several things and second readings of several items. Uh, we do have a change order, uh, on the runway reconstruction project. So, when the contractor, uh, tried to order the conduit that FAA requires for their navigation aids on the project, uh, the, they found out that conduit is no longer manufactured, uh, even though it was specified in our documents. So, um, they all, they worked with the FAA and found a substitute, but it is a ninety-nine thousand dollar change order. Um, so, uh, it is grant-eligible and part of the grant project, so it, uh, so it's within our con- well within our contingent thing that we have at this stra- stage, but that was, uh, uh, kind of a surprise for us. Uh, we do have, uh, an amendment to contract mowing. That item is, this is, uh, a lot of, all of our right-of-way and also several parks that we've contracted out for the mowing. This is, uh, I think it was with Little Apple, and we, you might recall, we did a multi-year, uh, RFP, and they were the, the ones that won that out. And so, this is, I believe, year four of five, uh, on that particular contract. The city-state agreements, a couple of those, uh, from KDOT on the grants we've been awarded, so this is just the execution of those. The first one there is that, uh, for that sidewalk that's gonna get built, uh, on the north side of, uh, Fort Riley Boulevard from Martin Luther King Junior up to where the sidewalk is, just below, just beyond Delaware. So, that's that particular project. The other one is the, the Juliet South of Points, uh, for that Brick Street grant that, uh, we got that goes to Pierre in that intersection. Uh, so that'll officially kinda start those processes, and let those, uh, processes start the design. The airport rent abatement, you might recall, we had quite a bit of discussion about that, uh, at budget time, uh, where, uh, during this closure period, uh, uh, we believed it was gonna be best to not require those tenants to pay rent, uh, since they can't really function. Uh, and so, that amounts to about eighty-one thousand dollars, uh, and it's, uh, for the, the businesses that, uh, they'll get four months abatement for the ones that are involved with the full closure. Once the, the crosswind runway one opens back up, then some will only have a three-month abatement. So, that's, uh, that, the, the Airport Board has, uh, reviewed that and discussed it and, and recommends it as well. Uh, related to, dropped down a couple there to the hangars. Uh, you might recall that, uh, we received, uh, a two-year grant, uh, one point one million over two years for two point two total, uh, and, uh, to build some airport hangars. And this was kind of one of those extra grants that, uh, we could apply for. So, the, uh, we already have Olson, uh, as our renewed, uh, consultant, uh, for them. And so, this is in agreement with them to start design of those hangars. We estimate that we can build, uh, eight, uh, box hangars, uh, for General Aviation for the airport with these funds.
Eight individual planes.
Yeah.
And there's plenty of demand for that?
There is, very, very high demand, yep. And then, uh, that Federal Funds Exchange right, right above it, that's the, uh, that's when we, uh, can take ninety percent of what KDOT is offering that, in that exchange, uh, if, so, the, I think the total's over seven hundred thousand, and so, that ten percent KDOT keeps in exchange for us being able to use this grant money off, off KDOT routes. So, if, if we take the hundred percent, we have to use it on KDOT routes. If we exchange it, we can use ninety percent on anything we want in town. Doesn't have to be affiliated with KDOT's program at all. Um, and right now, we're targeting all of that to the roundabout at Kimball and Grandmere, so, which...
That thing's a mess.
Yeah, which, which is out to bid, and it's on the, on the eighteenth for award, and...
How mu- how much is the KDOT exchange money?
It's six hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
What do you, um, what's the plan for that? I mean, is, could be anything's changed as far as the design there to make it a little better?
So, recall the, and, and you probably haven't seen that, but, uh, there's a, there's actually, I think, on our website, but I'll send you a link to the, it, it moves the new roundabout to the north, and, and makes it larger, north and west. Um, and then, uh, there's a temporary, we're, we're gonna close Kimball for the summer to try and get all the major work done, so at least the roadway of Kimball can be reopened temporarily.
So, I have to put out all those flights to, like, get rid of the other ones?
Yes, sorry. But if we get a good bidder, which we're hoping, and there, there, I think, uh, Rob said there's four or five generals that have picked up, which is, that's really good. We could use another airport runway bid, right? Uh, with some competition, but, uh, it's, it's, you never know when you're bidding this time of year.
That routes all the traffic through the clubhouse parking lot.
For a period of time.
For a period of time, 'cause that's the only other exit for all those, yeah, west-side Grandmere people and stuff, so...
So, more to come on, on that particular, particular one. Um, and then we need to do some temp notes when we, when we originally awarded the underground electrical and the sanitary sewer on the alley there between, uh, twelve-hundred block alley between Moro and Laramie. We didn't authorize the temporary notes for it, so we're going back and picking that back up. Uh, okay, I think that's it for the fourth. And then, uh, on the eighteenth, uh, we've got a public hearing. This is, uh, one of a simple vacation travel easements, utility easements up on Heartland Valley. Uh, I'm, I don't know the full story, I'm guessing they're building an outbuilding or a pool or something, and there's nobody that's utilized that. That area's been established for quite a while, so, uh, the utility companies are willing to, uh, to do those vacates, but you have to hold the public hearing to officially do it. And then, uh, on the general agenda, we anticipate having, uh, contracts back for you to consider on the economic development policy update that we had the work session on, as well as the housing, uh, element of that. And then, uh, first readings of, uh, some of the Chapter Two regulating public records, and, uh, first reading to amend temporary political signs. And, uh, I think we're mainly catching up with state statute changes on both of those, or, and, and modernizing, I'm sure.
For the core one, which is regulating public records, that's state statute, modernizing. And then the temporary political signs is both the federal case law, um, from the U.S. Supreme Court and some statutory changes.
Okay, great, thank you, Katie. Uh, we've got, uh, GeoBond sale date and a temp note sale date. The, probably the big one on there, in addition to the Kimball and Grand, uh, Kimball and Grandmere Roundabout, uh, down there on the, uh, RFQ for Sunset. So, we've, we've got some water line needs for capacity and age deterioration on Sunset, as well as stormwater and just street, street improvements. If you've, we, over the years, have had mill and overlays, there's, you know, instead of a six-inch curb, there maybe is a two-inch curb in spots, uh, but, uh, a lot of the stuff we need to do is, is underground. So, this is really just an RFQ, uh, to find a firm to help us with design. So, it's not something, it's something that, it's gonna take probably a year to design, uh, and then, uh, see where we go after that, depending on all the, uh, different aspects that they, they find. Uh, so, it's just an RFQ to solicit, uh, engineering services. And then, uh, we do have that sanitary sewer acoustic inspection program. This is a, uh, request for bids. There's some specialty contractors out there that really, uh, help us inspect our sanitary sewer lines. We've been doing some of the bigger ones especially to tell us whether or not we've got, uh, uh, potential for failures coming up on some of those sound tests. So, something we've added recently to, uh, some of our maintenance routines. Uh, let's see, I think that's, that's about it. Work session-wise, uh, on the back, we've got, uh, uh, on the eleventh, an RCTD update, and then it's Parks and Rec Review Night for all their boards. Parking and Rec Advisory Board, the Douglas Center Board, the Discovery Center Board, and the Cemetery Board. And then, uh, on the twenty-fifth of April, we got the first CVB report and an update on the ADA process and the plan, uh, coming forward for, to update you all on status of things.
Is that the contract, I mean, I know you've, um, you broke it into two pieces, I think, to, uh, um, so you're just, what is it you're gonna be doing?
This is the self-evaluation piece.
Okay.
So, we haven't developed a transition plan yet, because we're, we're still evaluating all that rights of way, sidewalks, facilities, intersections, programs and services. And that's, that's mainly what the, uh, work session on April twenty-fifth is gonna be about. The findings that our consultants have come up with, with all the review of those facilities.
And then, uh, continued board reviews, Airport Board, Code Appeals Board, and Housing Appeals Board. Then on May ninth, uh, asked Rob to give you a pavement management update on, uh, some of the status of, uh, our conditions, as, as well as, uh, our pavement management system, and, uh, he's had some consultants do analysis work there to update that plan, and then just kind of what's going forward as we're, uh, you know, a little over halfway through that tax, and, and what we've been able to accomplish, and what we pursue we're gonna be able to accomplish. Obviously, there's been a big bump in, in costs, so we're certainly not being able to do as many, uh, miles of, of street that we used to do for the same cost, and, 'cause those costs are, have, have accelerated as well. So, he'll be giving us that update, and then, uh, I think that's the, the last of, uh, the board reviews for the Audit Committee and the Aggieville and Downtown BIDs. On the twenty-third of May, we're looking at bringing you the, uh, some of the draft Cemetery Master Plan elements, uh, for you to look at. They've been gathering input and held some public meetings and, uh, moving forward with that. And then, we're not planning, uh, a meeting on the fifth Tuesday of that month, uh, I will...
Is that on Memorial Day weekend?
It is Memorial Day week. Um, I'm gonna be back down in Houston that week for some additional treatment, just FYI. So, so far, so good. Uh, and then the budget stuff starts, so... That's all I had, Mayor.
Alrighty, very cool. Um, so, is Linda, are you doing K-Man next, next Tuesday then, since I did your, who's, what's your understanding?
I'm off the sc- I mean, I don't...
I was gonna say, since I covered your March one, the, the thought was swapping.
Yeah, yeah.
You doing the first April, and I would do the last April one.
Okay, so I'll do it this next time?
April fourth, yeah, next Tuesday.
Thank you.
All right.
'Cause I woke up this morning and thought, oh, my gosh, I'm supposed to be there. This isn't legislative, wait a minute.
So, yeah, I'll be the eighteenth, and, and she'll do the fourth.
And then, assume you're done in, in May, John, and can be back on the, probably the, the June, and you can, you can have June, July, and August, or?
All right, um, when you got anything for the good of the cause here? Nope, John, what you thinking about?
Uh, the Housing Authority, we moved the meeting from the third Wednesday to the fourth Wednesday of the month, so we need to update that on the website.
What the, what's the, are you guys still waiting to hear back on the project or something?
We've got, we're all good with getting everything in, and we've got good applications, so...
Just sitting on ice then, okay.
Um, I would like to ask Ron, I saw in the mail folder about the county, uh, discussion about Seco Park, and, uh, and I know that the city's being asked, and, and no commissioner, but the city's being asked for a representative. I just wondered who you, who you have designated.
So, actually, and I, you know, they didn't, I wasn't aware that this was on their agenda, or I might've attended earlier, 'cause I was on later that day for my update, and they didn't bring it up when, when I was there. So, um, what was fascinating about that, and, and I haven't been able to go back, and I sent you the link to the meeting.
I listened to it.
To the discussion, so I don't know when they brought up that design that they had in the packet. So, as I understand, Tracy Anderson just volunteered to create these concepts, and nobody's really hired him to, to do that. We certainly didn't have a, a play with that.
He has developed the, um, plans for the aquatic center, and that's why I think...
But it wasn't there, where, where he had it located, and I don't think it even looked like that.
Yeah, who knows? I don't know either, but, and, and I think they're just, it's conceptual.
Yeah, it is, and it...
They're, they're interested in kicking off.
It was based on the, the bulk of the discussion was about the, whether do they wanna re-locate the fair, and they had, I didn't print it out for you, but if you're interested, it looks like, I don't know if they had the Prazer's office, but some... but somebody did a thorough appraisal of all of their buildings and sheds and.
Cool.
And everything there. And they, I think to come up with a value that they want either us or the school district or both to compensate them off. I don't know if that's their, I don't know if that's their goal. But anyway, there's been no formal or even informal really discussions between our staffs. And so, you know, I, my understanding is though, is the, the, the issue of, I believe the, the foundation did approach the county about being involved in the, in the arena project. And, and, you know, would they be interested in helping fund some of those other buildings that they might also be able to use for the fair and the, and the livestock arenas and the shows that the 4H and others put on there. I think, and so they created this task force. So, and I couldn't tell whether they actually did, but the, what I, that listing I got was, was, was in their mail folder. But when I did listen to the end of it, they were debating about positions. So I don't know what they ended up with because I didn't see the minutes.
From what I heard, they changed it during the meeting.
But they did look like they were either gonna have a commissioner or a city rep of some kind. So once I get a notice, they said, I'll certainly keep you advised.
I'm glad they're kicking off the discussion.
Yeah.
Because the community does need some input and especially those that have been using the county services. Just the whole of Seco Park is a topic that people are interested in. So.
And they're the big, they're the majority owner of real estate.
Glad they're doing it. Yeah.
But you know, on that, that fairground thing, you know, the county commission needs to get with the KSU Foundation because it seems to me that arena project is, is the way to go and would save them money. And, you know, the other thing I would tell them, I didn't realize they wanted the city to buy their buildings. That's insanity because the taxpayers are the city. The city's part of the county. They keep forgetting that.
They've already paid for it.
And we've already paid for it as taxpayers and we're not paying for it again. So I'm adamant about that. That's a dumb idea.
All right. Linda, anything else?
Did have something. Let's see. I, that, so that was just the, the topic that was in that memo that we got. I did want to mention that here, I want to talk about just a few minutes or seconds about the 2023 spring cleanup. And that's this week. So on Wednesday, it'll be K-State and west and north of Anderson, it looks like, for the lawn and tree debris pickup. But Northview is scheduled for Thursday. And so as is the, the, what is that? Up there by the old Holiday Inn area? Anyway. But the core or the older part of the community will be on Friday. And this is important because your normal trash pickup people do not pick up tree limbs and your leaves and that kind of thing. So don't miss this opportunity is, is all I wanted to say.
Yeah, and, and I was pleased with some of the publication we've had on it. I know a couple of TV stations have carried it. And so the, the big, the big change is that we did, we asked our crews for input and they said they'd like to change the route. And, and so that's, that's what we did and reversed it basically.
I was glad Northview wasn't last. We've always been, we've always been last. And sometimes spill into the next week.
And there's always an education effort about, you know, keeping things separate. Don't tie them together. Recycle bags, not plastic bags.
There are some instructions about, you know, there are tree limbs that are too big for that. But thank you. That was all I want, just highlight that. Very, thank you very much, Jason. That's the pickup. Those are the pickup dates and the territory.
Okay, that is all we have for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn someone?
I move we adjourn. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Hattasol.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, motion passed, meeting adjourned. Go Bat Cats.